There we go. It is now six o'clock and I'm calling this regularly scheduled meeting of the San Benito County Planning Commission to order. If we could please read the not so temporary procedures.
The San Benito County Planning Commission welcomes your comments. When addressing the commission via Zoom, phone, or in chambers, please state your name and county in which you reside for the record. Please address the commission as a whole through the chair. If participating via Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you are using a phone, press star nine to raise your hand. When your, when your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been unmuted. If you are participating in person at the chambers, please complete a speaker card identifying the item on which you wish to speak and provide your completed card to the clerk prior to consideration of the item. Speaker cards are available on the table at the entrance to the chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Ring Hayden, if you could please lead us in the pledge. Thank you. If we could have a roll call, please.
Absolutely. District one Vincent Ring Hayden.
Present.
District two Richard Way.
Present.
District three Robert Scagliotti.
Present.
District four Robert Gibson.
Present.
District five Celeste Toledo Boca Negra.
Present.
All commissioners are present in chambers and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Department announcements?
Hi, good evening Chair and fellow commissioners. So, we just wanted to, you know, it's a new, new year, so we just wanted to remind that we have, you know, two, the homeless task force and the agenda was attached, and then also the San Benito County Conservation Plan. And those meetings were attached as well. And so those will be continuing on and we have not changed who was assigned to those. Is there any questions?
I have a question. Is the homeless task force on the second Tuesday or the third Tuesday of the month?
It is on, let me pull it up. Oh, here we go. It is on the fourth. The fourth Monday of the month.
No, that's, that can't be right because the next one is on April eighth.
Oh, second.
It's
Oh, second.
Second Monday of the month.
Yeah, and there's a difference between the full task force and then subcommittees, but the full meetings are the second Monday, I believe.
Thank you, you're right. I was looking at the outreach one.
Every other month.
Which is the fourth.
Yep.
Do you wish to remain on?
No, that's, that's, that's my answer. I was a little confused and that, now I'm clear.
Okay, so we're just keeping the same folks on the same committees that we had last year?
Correct. And it, for the housing, it's the HTF bowl, the dark blue is, is the one. So, the next meeting is the eighth of April twenty-four.
And just for the future, if we can have that item on the January agendas, if the board can do it, I think we can figure, figure it out. Just so that we have everybody in place for the various committees.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, good afternoon. As I, as staff has been coming up after any each planning commission meeting, just to indicate the projects that have come in. And this month, we have received one discretionary permit application and it's for a conditional use permit. And the conditional use permit addresses a code enforcement case for a cabinet storage, construction, and finishing within three existing buildings. And operations would run from eight AM to four PM and the property would also house a welder for agricultural repair who primarily works offsite. And the site is located at 10th Flint Road. We have a, we have an image on the, on the slide. If I see my, if we can enough to put it as well, that would be great. And it's off of Highway one fifty-six, west of Flint Road. So, this is in regards to discretionary permits that have come in.
And thi- this is the parcel where the planning commission has twice approved a cell phone tower, correct? Okay.
That is the same one.
Thank you.
That's correct. You're welcome. And just wanted to also indicate
After page nine, it'd be page ten, I guess.
I also wanted to inform the planning commission that Shay Holmes has been working with Third Millennium for San Juan Oaks. As you know, there are five phases for the San Juan Oaks development located just to the south of the intersection of Union and Highway one fifty-six. And they have been working with the planning department to submit for phase one, which consists of two hundred and seventy-nine residential units. They're age-restricted market rate homes. Part of the requirements is that they also pay a impact fee for the sewer treatment. Not the collection, only the sewer treatment with the city of Hollister. So, we've been in communication with the city of Hollister to get that process, that process in place. Essentially, they'll go, they will pay their impact fee to the city of, city of Hollister. They also have to conduct other business such as impact fees for schools. They'll provide that information to the county assembly or building, building department prior to issuance of a building permit. So, within the first, within the next few weeks, as your, as the public is driving westbound on Highway one fifty-six at westbound of the intersection of Union and Highway one fifty-six, as they look to the south towards San Juan Oaks, you'll start seeing some vertical construction within the next few weeks. Just wanted to give the planning commission a heads up on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that concludes the reports.
Oh, thank you. Public comment. Is there any general, general public comment? Any comment that falls under the purview of the planning commission but is not on this evening's agenda?
There is no public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
Thank you very much. Public comment is closed. Consent agenda. We have the acknowledgment of certificate of posting and we have two sets of minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? If not, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Can I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda?
I second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Public hearing seven point one. It is a proposed subdivision of a hundred and twenty-three and a half acres. And I am going to recuse myself because the family that owns this property is my employer. Commissioner Scagliotti will be taking over.
Okay. Good evening Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Alievus, Assistant Planner with San Benito County. And this evening, I will be presenting county planning file two-two-zero-zero-two-one, minor subdivision at eighty-three forty-nine Airline Highway. Our discussion tonight will cover project location, description, sequoia, land use, and staff recommendations. The site is approximately eight miles southeast of downtown Hollister. Around one mile to the southeast of the intersection of Kinsabi Road and Highway twenty-five. The project is located directly across from Bellato Park slash County Fair in a rural area surrounded by mostly agricultural land uses with some rural housing. The project proposes to subdivide an existing one hundred and twenty-three point five acre lot into two lots of sixty-four and a half acres and fifty-nine acres respectively. Parcel one is undeveloped grazing land. Parcel two has two existing wells and an existing Verizon cell tower and the existing vineyards. It is also worth noting that this subdivision changes very little about what entitlements would be allowed as the lots are large and because the applicant proposes only the new lines and no construction. Additionally, the zoning already allows for nearly the same degree of use without the subdivision. The image on the screen indicates the locations of the existing wells for parcel one and two, as well as the existing Verizon cell tower slash lease area. This map also shows the existing forty-foot access road that will serve both parcels one and two using the existing access road off Highway twenty-five. The areas in gray are the areas of thirty percent or greater slope. No construction is proposed at this time. This photo shows the project site facing east towards the Diablo Range. This photo shows the project site facing north towards Trespinios and Hollister Valley. This photo shows the project site facing south towards Pisinas. And this project shows the site facing southwest towards Bellato Park and the county fairgrounds. The project is designated Rangeland or RG by the general plan and is zoned agricultural Rangeland, AR, by the zoning code. The project is consistent with both its general plan designation and its zoning designation. The purpose of the underlying, the project's properties RG general plan designation is to maintain open space and grazing land on hills in remote areas of the county. This designation allows support uses that directly support agricultural operations and one principal residential dwelling unit per lot. The intent of the AR zoning designation is to provide for areas within the county to be used for agricultural Rangeland purposes as set forth in the general plan. Very low density residential development is permitted due to the lack of public infrastructure and for the preservation of open space and agriculture. This project is consistent with general planned policy LU three point two, agricultural integrity and flexibility. With the large lots of sixty-four and a half and fifty-nine acres proposed by this subdivision, it ensures continued viability for the existing vineyard operations while aligning with zoning regulations. The project allows for ongoing agricultural commercial success while still meeting criteria for potential agricultural preserve status under San Benito County Code, chapter nineteen oh one. Let's see. So, under the guidelines for implementation of the California, California Environmental Quality Act, this project qualifies for an exemption under section one-five-zero-six-one B three as it is evident that the proposed subdivision will not significantly impact the environment. With no construction planned at this stage, the project avoids disruptions in any environmentally sensitive areas. Furthermore, the applicant's proposal primarily revolves around delineating new property boundaries and does not include plans for new construction. The current zoning regulations already allow for the nearly the same level of land use as what could occur with or without this subdivision. Staff recommends that the planning commission review the staff report, review the attached draft resolution, including findings and conditions of approval, receive public comment, and adopt the resolution including findings to approve minor subdivision parcel map PLN two-two-zero-zero-two-one subject to the conditions of approval found in the resolution. Thank you. Any questions?
And the members have any questions? I have one. Does that parcel anywhere touch anywhere county roads?
No, it does not. It is all, the old frontage area of it is Caltrans right away.
Okay, and where's the ingress egress?
The ingress egress is, let me see here, to be back on, I think it's slide five, I think, indicates that. It's a forty-foot existing access road off of Highway twenty-five that's been, that's been with the parcel since Bellato Park.
Does that go through Bellato Park?
No, it goes to the north and it's, it's the parcel next to it that is actually privately on the golf course on the other side. Or the former golf course lines are on the other side.
So, is there anything that if they do decide to put some houses back there, we have to put a restriction to get a road put in there now? Or do we have to wait and do it later if they decide they're going to build back there?
As far as, as far as that would be concerned, that would be, we would need to see new plans for how they would, if they were going to put additional houses back there. It is mostly letting itself to grazing land, but there is an area where you could do a home development. But as far as major subdivision development, we would need more, there would be, there would be additional county approval to be able to do additional homes. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. For the wells, are they located in one parcel or?
Correct. They're both on parcel two. And they are at the southern end and sort of northern end of the parcel. And they serve the vineyards.
Okay, great. And I think Commissioner Scagliotti answered the other ones. Thank you.
So, there's two wells on, there's one well for each property then when it splits?
That's correct.
Okay. What is the purview of the board?
You need to, we should probably have the applicant speak and then thereafter have public comment.
Okay.
Good evening. I, Anne Hall, I'm here on behalf of the applicant to answer your question. The access is through the Bellato property, the old golf course, by that house on the south end. So, the frontage is Caltrans, the access is from Caltrans, and then goes through the state property onto the vineyard property. The fire chief did come out and look at it and agreed for the current use. The road is sufficient. If and when they ever would build a home, that there would be potentially improvements required depending on where the home is and how they're going to access it. There is no intent to build a home right now. I know once things subdivided, anybody can do anything they want. But this, the Siletto, the family, Ron Siletto passed away about a year or so ago. This is his sons are dividing the property for estate purposes and the really only intent here is to divide the vineyard property from the grazing property. As of right now, that's the intent to continue that use. So, one of these conditions in here though, the fire chief did say if at some point in the future there is a home built, they will then have to qualify with all the requirements associated with a driveway, whether it came directly from Airline Highway or whether it goes through the vineyard property. But right now, we're showing an easement through the vineyard property that gets you to the grazing property. The other question had to do with the wells. There are two wells. But we've identified one would be available to one parcel and the other would be available to the other parcel. So, there's one, effectively one well for each parcel even though they're both located on the vineyard parcel. I don't really have too many questions about the conditions. These are fairly standard conditions. Except condition seventeen, I would ask be stricken. This is, the condition requires a well pump test, a soils report, and septic suitability report prior to recording the map. And this was added later, was not part of what I'd seen, but Environmental Health did review this. When you have a single well, you're not required to have a well pump test. So, there's no requirement for a pump test on this particular subdivision. And Environmental Health reviewed that and agreed with that. Same with, and then septic suitability. Again, these are extremely large parcels until the time that a house is actually going to be considered. You could do a test anywhere on the property and it, it wouldn't mean much if you're going to end up putting the house, you know, on the other end of the property. So, they conditioned that septic suitability be done at the time a house is actually proposed. And same with the soils report. Again, I can't remember how about the acreage is here, but a soils report without a plan to build something, there's a lot of acres here to do a soils report on and it becomes meaningless if it's not in the right location. So, these are standard conditions in the ordinances, but there are exceptions to them depending on the specifics of the subdivision. And in this case, I don't believe that it is really the intent of the county to require these prior to the map being recorded. And I also feel that these are covered under other conditions saying when you build a house and when you do, you know, if you do further development, these will be in effect. So, I don't think they're getting out of anything by removing this. The only thing it does is not make them have to happen before this map records. They will have to happen before any type of development at such time there was development. So, that is my only concern, their question, request, that you consider striking condition seventeen. Do you have any questions for me?
Do we remove seventeen completely or, or did you, we modify?
I would say remove it completely because I believe everything that's stated in there is covered on other conditions. And I can, I mean, I can point out where if you like. I just feel like this one, the issue with this one is it's requiring them all prior to the map being recorded.
As long as, you know, your staff and I trust your, for, you know, I trust the fact that you, you're knowledgeable in this section. And this, as long as the tests are there, when the applicant comes back for the purposes needed, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
And just to be clear, I'm not staff.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're the applicant representative, yes.
I mean, staff can, you certainly can ask staff to verify this, but I, I believe these items, the soil, the test, the soils report and the septic suitability are covered other, under other conditions and it is not required prior to the recordation of the map.
Yeah, well, I agree with the applicant, applicant in principle here. I'm even concerned that if we did require the items in condition seventeen at this time, I'm not saying they would, but the applicant could in theory at some, some subsequent point when they decided to develop the property, say, well, you know, we already did that back, way back when and so we don't have to do it again now. So, if anything, it might behoove us to remove item seventeen at the moment.
Now I have a question for staff. Do these, does the record, that thing are, their record, if that were to happen?
So, can you raise your question?
So, if the applicant were to come back and we completely remove seventeen, would staff know that they would need to apply it?
So, whenever they reply for, what we were going to suggest was saying, because part of this code settled in here is that you have to prove developability of the lots. And so, we were going to say to revise, to say prior to building permit application, to have this as a requirement for, that way it's sort of covering that aspect so that it's not sort of a lost condition in the future. And granted, it is requirements of building permits, but I think that's what staff's recommendation would be to modify it to that rather than prior to the parcel.
I would, if they change it to prior to building permit application, it, it resolves my immediate concern, which is doing this part of the map. I would argue though that pump well test is not required if you have one well for one building. So, the, the, some of the things that are specifically being called out here may not be required even at building permit. I would say, you know, perhaps it would, if we strike the specifics and just say newly created parcels being in compliance with the state government code and the county code, I mean, because here it says county code water supply requirements, then that includes the exception for like when you have one well in one house, it doesn't require pumping. I'm fine with saying, you know, at a time of construction, comply with all codes. I don't have an issue with that. But like I said, some of these specific, the specific requirement to have a pump test or to have a soil test may not actually be required even when you're going through a building permit.
I have one question. Have they done a potability test on those wells?
Um, yes, and we provided that information to Environmental Health in part of the initial application.
Okay, so they pass quality for potability?
Yes.
Both wells?
Yes, we supplied information on two wells. But technically, they don't have to pass potability for one house on one well.
Really?
Yes. That is
That doesn't seem right.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but
But that's the law.
But that is what the requirement is now. And that's, you can talk to Darryl Long at Environmental Health.
So, staff would be okay with the changes. The only thing is, is that in general, when you're doing subdivision map, because it would be allowed to have another house, it has to have, subdivision map act indicates that you have to have the potability test for future development. So, we're saying basically to prove this developable, just have it prior to construction, prior to building permits, we can put that condition in. And we can change it to the county codes being applicable.
Staff will take care of the verbiage?
Yes.
So, basically we would say at time of construction, comply with all county codes?
Mm-hmm.
County, yeah.
Prior to building permits, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Sure. Sure.
Here we go. Public comment? Public comment? Public comment is closed. Oh, online, I'm sorry.
There is no public comment online or via Zoom.
Okay, public comment is closed. What is the purview of the board? What do you guys want it to be?
Before we make a motion, did you wanna, anything about the road fixture, or I know that's some common, something common word, that I'm not too sure?
Well, I'd like to see them put a new road in, but that's not going to happen. Yeah, it'll come up, that'll come up when they apply for the permit.
It's just that I bring it up.
Oh, yeah, no, I'd go for it all if I could, if I can. Rick, what do you think?
I'm, I'm okay with what we discussed.
With the revisions on...
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to remove seventeen...
No, amend seventeen.
Amend seventeen to language, so that everything's covered when they apply for the building permit, to get this out eventually.
I'll second that.
Do we have a vote?
And also, within this motion is the actual approval of the conditional use permit, right? I mean, we're not just removing the condition.
No, and the approval.
Okay, okay. Then I'll second that. Or, oh, I'm sorry, somebody already seconded it.
It's okay, I'll second that.
Okay, so we're voting?
Let's hope.
Aye.
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 Aye. Oral. Sorry, you end this, Robert. Get in here.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item. Eight point one, Assistant County Counsel.
Good evening, Commission. Sean Cameron, Assistant County Counsel. I'm going to go over item eight point one, which is a discussion of the duties ordinance related to the planning commission. I didn't know if we wanted to put that up.
Yeah, hang on, give me one second. We're having some technical difficulties with our technology.
Can we make it larger, for a chance? Okay, there we go. So, I'll just read through the section, the items with changes. So, the first change is to be one, and so it will, it will read, "It shall be the duty of the planning commission to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding any proposed affordable housing plan, master or general plan, or amendment thereto for the physical development of the county." I think I'll just go through each one, and then we can have questions at the end.
Uh, before you do that, can I, can I just ask what the impetus is for this? I mean, what, I, I guess these are changes that are required, or changes that are recommended, or...
I've, I've been working on this thing for three years, so the impetus is the chair.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yes. And so then, B for C. "The San Bernardino County Planning Department shall assist and advise the planning commission as directed by the Board of Supervisors or the planning commission. The assistance and advice shall include but not be limited to the provision of staff and resources to enable the commission to function, operate, and transact such business as may be addressed or initiated by the commission." D, which is entirely new, "The planning commission shall review the annual planning department budget and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors." E, "The planning commission shall periodically review the county capital improved, improvement projects for consistency with the general plan and related elements." F, "The planning commission shall communicate with other county advisory bodies concerned with planning matters." G, "The planning commission shall develop such specific plans as may be necessary or desirable." H, "The planning commission shall advise with and recommend to the proper officials of the county the approval, disapproval, or modification of all maps or plots of land subdivision in accordance with the subdivision map act of the state or as may be provided by county code." I, "The planning commission shall make recommendations concerning proposed public works and for the clearance and rebuilding of blighted or substandard areas within the county and public improvement in general." J, "The planning commission shall make recommendations to the appropriate county staff concerning projects or properties to be cited for code violations or to be issued a stop work order." K, "The planning commission shall review and recommend impact fees." And lastly, L, "The planning commission shall negotiate and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors regarding development agreements."
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Are there any comments or questions from the commission before we go to public comment? And then I'll make a statement after that. Commissioner Toledo?
For C, F bodies, where it says the planning commission shall communicate with other county advisory bodies concerned with the planning, with planning matters. Can you identify exactly that?
What other bodies those might be?
Yeah.
Well...
Yes.
For purposes of planning, that could be COG, that could be LAFCO, that could be the City of Hollister's Council, their planning commission, it could be San Lomba Batista, and their planning commission. It's all the bodies that involve...
Local government.
We haven't worked together historically, and it's probably why we're in the position that we've been stuck in, so...
I appreciate that.
Just trying to expand our ability to, to function better.
I marked up the same item and, and for the same reason, and I think my problem is the verbiage. It, it talks about other county advisory bodies. To me, that limits it unnecessarily. When I read that, I don't read that as allowing us to communicate with the Hollister, the city. So, I would say other advisory bodies within the county maybe, rather than county advisory bodies. It's a subtle distinction, but...
I appreciate that.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, thank you. And I have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
For, what is it? H, it's maps or plots or plats? Just making sure.
Is it? Plats, okay. Okay, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure what a plat is. Okay, plat.
Plat.
Plat, okay. Noted.
Thank you.
We'll figure out the historical. I thought plat was correct, but...
Is it? Okay. I'll, yeah.
We'll do some Googling.
Some research on what is the correct terminology there, and use that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Way?
Yeah, I'd like to add a, a potential section M at the end here, if, if M is the next letter. Yeah, I guess it is.
It would be, I, I think.
Which is just to, to make it clear that this is not an exhaustive list. There are other things that the planning commission may be responsible for, and if they're not specifically mentioned in here, it does not mean that we are not to be involved in them. Oh, it's noted? I'm sorry.
Section three covers, I, I think that's about you.
It, it does.
Number three, "The planning commission shall have such further duties and responsibilities as may be assigned to it from time to time by the Board."
All right.
And that's where this list is, we're trying to get the Board to assign these duties to us.
Okay, I withdraw my proposal.
I appreciate you watching out for us, though. Start another additional. Okay, Commissioner Ringhaden? Okay, Commissioner Scagliotti?
Nothing at this time.
Wow. Three years of fighting and it's, okay, public comment. Is there any public comment regarding this item?
There is no public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
Public comment is closed. Wow. Okay. So, do we have, do we need a, do we need a motion to bring this back for an action item to recommend the Board adopt?
I would like a, a motion to just give direction, whether to bring it back to this body or to the Board of Supervisors as an ordinance.
Well, what's, what would the process be? Do we need a resolution from the planning commission to recommend to the Board, or can we just send this to the Board now?
Uh, yes, resolution.
Okay.
So, yeah, in that sense, then we should bring it back. If we're going to have a resolution on it, then we should bring it back.
Okay. Then I move that we adopt a resolution at the April meeting to recommend that the Board make these changes to our duties and authority.
Yeah, and when we do that, we'll make those changes and have it all, you know.
With the changes noted, correct, yes. Is there a second?
Aye, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Carries five zero. Thank you.
Yeah.
Surprised the Chair there. Next item. Twenty, Title twenty-five zoning code amendments. And I think there's a consensus from the commission that we want to go over every change other than a renumbering structure. If there's any kind of textual change, we would like to go over everything, and I think that we have a lot of questions.
Ariel Gutspeed, Principal Planner with the County, to go over some Title twenty-five zoning code update text amendments. Based on that request through the Chair, would we like to go through item by item?
Yes.
Okay. Not a problem. So, the, the next slide. So, I will have to switch back and forth, I'll have to pull up the drafts. But essentially, for the PQP, the main change was in the general plan, it has, and then in even the code section, it has to allow for landfills, recycling, resource recovery. But then if you actually go to the tables of uses of saying it can be permitted or administrative or conditional, it was not included, it was all excluded out of PQP, so this was a correction. But let me now pull up the table, so it's going to, give me a minute while I go back and forth. Let me put it, okay, let me pull it up from, I guess the website. Oh, okay. Can you pull it up from the website? We could go as the attachment, it would be...
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I was struggling to figure out why we were, we were restating what was already in there, but it was to click, to change the, correct the table.
It was to correct the table.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could, yeah, if you could pull it up on the website or on the screen, please. Um, you are going to scroll down to, this is going to be... I go... It's zoning map and...
No.
No, it's the zoning map and districts, and then you're going to table, it's not, it's not central, central, towards the end is the...
While we're waiting, I looked, I Googled plat, and it is, I go to plat, and it is a plot of land.
It's just an older, older language.
There you go.
If you're looking at historical documents, it's always plat. Who knows why? The British.
It's under the commercial land use table, twenty-five oh three zero zero six, under section... Yeah, zero zero six.
Oh.
Um, we, we... Uh, I had, I had summarized all the changes, I still want to... Oh, we could do that. Zero zero six, twenty-five oh three zero zero six. Page, or zero zero, sorry, zero zero eight, keep going, forty-eight. Page one, one eighty-seven. That's where I don't look at it, because...
Oh, yeah, there's PQP.
Um, yeah, PQP, but, uh, you... One... Start on page one eighty-four. Yeah.
Oh, there's a start of that.
Yeah, keep going. And the numbering here is different than there, so it's not true. Hmm.
It should be in that table somewhere.
Keep going. Right there. Um... Grazing was going to be A, and then it's P. Um, yep, I guess we can go through it.
Why was grazing A or C?
By, I, C should, is crossed, should be crossed out.
Okay, so it's allowed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, well, it could be P for permitted, so then it's allowed by right, or A is administrative.
P?
Okay. So, we'll change it.
My, that's my thought. It should be allowed by right, because why not?
Okay, then we'll change it to...
Is there consensus? To graze? If it's just sitting there idle, might as well graze it down as opposed to having a fire?
There's not much I think planning would be reviewing for grazing.
So, you want to leave it as a administrative, an A? Okay. Anyone? Anyone? Yeah, that's what I, I couldn't think of it. Bueller, Bueller. No, everything covers everything. Let's, just leave it at A then.
Yeah, just leave that one alone, let them graze.
Administrative permit.
Yeah.
Whi- which means it would need to go through planning where if it was P and permitted, then... Whi- which means it would need to go through planning where if it was P and permitted, then they just, they can go and do that.
Commissioner Way has concerns based upon the particulars. I don't have a.
Honestly, I'm fine with it either way. I, I don't have a strong opinion, it just, it just crossed my mind that, that, you know, there might be a situation where if we just say it's permitted, then somebody might do it in a place where it was completely inappropriate, where an, a quick administrative review would have said, no, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, leave it, it's administrative right now.
Consensus is administrative, okay? Leave it at A, okay.
Okay.
If it could strike out everything but A, please.
You got it. Um, oh, we lost the.
There it is, it's back.
Okay. All right, and then if we continue. On. Um. Down. Yeah, just scroll for me. Uh, under the industrial uses portion. Um, so, incl- oh, so including, uh, this, sorry, including assisted living and residential prepared facilities is per- permitted, that's just, um, transitional supportive, it's just more descriptive of what those supportive housing are, so it's just a descriptive, but not the land use table changing, changing. Then under industrial uses, um, we added them all to be conditional, uh, use permit, uh, under the PQP, and.
And that will cover a transfer station? Is this, is that?
Landfills.
Close enough to a landfill?
Uh, it includes landfills, and then we did add, if you scroll down. Uh, commercial composting operations, including wholesale resale sales of compost materials, so it was specifically added.
Okay.
Is that specific for a, um.
Transfer station?
We, uh, no, but we could say landfills and transfer stations, okay.
Please, just so it's covered.
Because someday we're gonna need it.
Someday we'll need something and might as well cover it now.
You got it. And. And then so if you keep going, um, household hazard wastes is conditional, renewable energy is conditional, um, supporting operations conditional, conference dinners. Um, so. I think those. I think that concludes all the additions.
Okay.
Under PQP, okay. This one's gonna help, because I included the, one of, some of the reference sections. Um, but for mobile home parks and RVs, so, um, mobile home parks are regulated by HED, so we included a reference and, uh, to the appropriate, uh, government code section. We also added in the regulations for RV parks to section twenty-five oh eight zero zero six, eight, uh, H and J, so we'll go to that section.
Um, there we go.
In the code, and then.
Commissioner Way has a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, it seems like we've skipped past something, and maybe, maybe I missed that we're gonna come back to it, and if so, with, then forgive me for raising this too early, but I actually have a question about twenty-five point oh one. Twenty-five oh one double oh seven, section seven.
Okay.
Uh, about, se- section six says final decision, the decision of the hearing body is final unless a decision is appealed. In all cases, the board of supervisors represents the final authority. And then seven turns around and says denial by board of supervisors, if the board denies an application, the applicant may refile the application with all required forms and fees immediately following the denial. Um, have we set up an infinite loop here? I mean, i- it seems as though, a- 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 what is the point of, of stating that? A, what is the point of stating that explicitly if it's already true by dint of the way the regulations are written? And B, um, can an applicant literally just keep refiling the exact same application with the board of supervisors?
So, in our, so I'll just provide some background. In our previous code, um, there had been that if it was denied, you, uh, applicant could resubmit in one year. That had been removed in the code revision of twenty twenty-two. Um, here, we're just providing clarification, we didn't put a time, so we didn't put a timeframe, we just s- said that they could resubmit, um, or refile an application, um, as long, uh. So we just, we were adding a, there wa- there, there was a reference that was removed, and so we're adding a reference. We could revise how that reference, it, so.
I like the year, I, I like the old way of having them wait a year before they refile.
I don't mind if they refile in less than a year, but this, this doesn't require any changes whatsoever, it's just like, refile the exact same application.
It's insanity, correct.
That doesn't make any sense.
I, Sean, did you have any?
Except that the members of the body could change.
Immediately?
Not immediately, right, but theoretically within that timeframe.
Yeah, I kinda like the year, that gives everybody a chance to cool off and, and maybe rethink what they're doing, myself.
Staff would also recommend that if they're refiling the same application, then that, that they've addressed, uh, the findings made in the denial.
Uh-huh.
That sounds good.
Does anyone still wanna wait a year, or do you want them to immediately be able to come back? Is your mic on?
I would just say I, I think there should be a year wait, that's, that's my thought.
Yeah, 'cause meetings can happen in between to go over issues if there's issues, obviously. So, I, I think it gives everybody a little time to think about the project, whatever it may be.
And a year's not that long.
And it's, and it's nothing new, because it used to be in the code, and obviously we missed that when we did the overhaul, like a few other things that we missed.
Oh, I like the year, and then also we do revisions to make the project better, but the, for, against, for the denial, so whatever the denial is.
Depends what the denial was.
By, by the time it reaches the board of supervisors and the board of supervisors denies it, there's presumably been quite a lot of public input and hearings and, and so on and so forth. So, yeah, there should be some period of, of waiting, I, I don't know if a year is the right number, but I don't think immediate is the right number.
I'm comfortable with a year.
What number would you be comfortable with? Just curious.
I'm okay with a year, I, I, I. I understand the point about changing personnel, um, but that kind of seems a little. That, that gives a, an ability for an applicant to game the system, so to speak, so it's better if it just has a date certain, and if the consensus is a year, then I'm, I'm on board with that.
Commissioner Toledo?
I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Ringhaden?
That's fine with me.
Commissioner Scagliotti?
I'm good with that.
So a year and the modifications to overcome the reasons for denial, that seems the most appropriate way to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and it was slide twelve for me, so, um, I was going in order of my slides, um, just to make sure I hit everything. But we could also just start from the beginning and scroll down through the code. It's just, I also had some code sections that weren't written, um, to discuss, but.
And then at the end, we all have a bunch of notes, and I'm sure we'll hit everything, so we make sure that we didn't miss anything.
Okay. Um. So going back to mobile home parks and RVs, um, section, if you wanna pull up section twenty-five oh eight zero zero six, H and I, MJ.
And this is the, the language regarding the thirty days out of ninety, correct? Which I have serious concerns about, and I'd like to know where that came from. Something that is accurate.
I can't keep up with all the speeches, I'm book pages.
Help me find the section we're talking about.
I have to find my notes.
Okay, 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 then, let's see, um, let me just pull it up here. I hadn't prepared to do this, but, um, so. Let's see. So, wanna, wanna start from, wanna start from the top?
Oh, different.
Are, are you going off of the, are you looking at the agenda that's posted? Okay.
Yeah.
Co-.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
That works.
Okay.
I found it, it's on page three hundred, three eleven of our packet.
Let's see.
Three eleven. Or I think this is the next thing in order.
So we did the denial, so.
Page three eleven.
Um, okay. Um, I think there was something. Okay, that, the denial concludes everything for section twenty-five oh one. So now twenty-five oh two permits and other planning actions. Okay, I'm working on scrolling through to, uh, let's see, um. So, going to, it's, uh, if you, are you in the attachment of twenty-five oh two?
I have to ask Sean.
Go to page eighteen.
Can this be continued to a special meeting where we have everything sorted out?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion, we continue this to a special meeting.
It's rather confusing right now. Is there a second, just to continue it?
Uh, can we?
And then we'll try to get our ducks in line, so we're all looking at the same things.
To continue it, or could we pick a date?
Two weeks? Um. 'Cause our, mm, our packets are different than that, and then that way our notes don't kinda jive with anything, and we're lost.
That would be on the April third?
Is that two weeks?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just showing you.
That would be okay, okay with me. 'Cause I don't wanna miss things like we did the last time.
I won't be in town on April third, no.
How about the tenth?
Oh, yeah.
Works.
April tenth, April tenth.
Okay, we don't.
All right.
I won't be in town on the tenth, myself.
You won't?
Well, we, we would have a quorum even without me, I mean, I can, I can provide my feedback, uh, via email, and, and some of my feedback is typographical errors here and there, so.
Okay, so the third.
That will be non-controversial, some of it.
Okay.
I mean, we do have another meeting on the seventeenth, which is.
The gen- that's the, the regular meeting.
Um.
True.
What's on the agenda for that meeting, anything?
Uh, for, for April, I think we had maybe one, um, one project, uh, on the April seventeenth meeting. Um, it isn't confirmed yet.
Okay.
Um, before we, before we do, uh, continue on, um, the board had, I would like to at least get a little bit of feedback. The board requested that we bring an ordinance on.